Calling this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Mr. Neville, you have the invocation and all your signs.
October, as you all know, is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. At our last meeting, this board and the administrators decided to showcase our awareness by wearing something pink and to make a joint contribution to a cancer fund to help fight cancer, thus the reason for all the pink that you see up here at the table. Cancer is an insidious disease. All of us are affected in some way as a victim, survivor, daughter, son, mother, father, aunt, uncle, brother, sister, or just a friend of someone who had cancer. Wouldn't it be interesting if we all embraced Joe Biden's wish that this country make a challenge to cure cancer similar to what John F. Kennedy did to get us to the moon? Maybe we could cure it. So tonight, let's take a moment and remember all those affected by cancer. Commit to doing everything we can to support cancer research, those with cancer, those who have died from cancer, and the cancer survivors, and pray that all of our efforts will eliminate the curse of cancer. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. In the event of a fire or an emergency, your emergency exit is located to the rear of the chamber or down the stairs to my left and out to the parking lot. Can I have a roll call, please, Kathy?
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yeah.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Peabody?
Present.
Mrs. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mr. Worer?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Chairman Serrard?
Present. Board guests.
None this evening.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have representatives from both high schools here, so you may choose where you'd like to start this evening.
Caitlin.
Last week was Spirit Week for Enfield High. So we had homecoming dance, a tailgate party before the game, and throughout the week we had different spirit days, like twin day, college day, school colors, and it helped everyone participate in school events. And I think there was a lot of school spirit in it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This week on Thursday, the National Honor Society is inducting new members in the Fermi auditorium. And on Saturday, the Fermi marching band will be performing at Championships at Willa Brook Park in New Britain. The cross-country team also has their state meet on Saturday as well in Wickham Park.
Thank you. Dr. Schuman.
One announcement about Election Day and Veterans Day. Both of these days will be non-school days for students. The staff will be in for professional development on both days. And on the 10th and the 13th, we'll be having our K-5 parent conferences. It'll be a half-day professional development for the 6 through 12 staff while the K-5 staff meets with parents, also in your packet with the grants report and personnel report.
Very good. Audiences. Gina and Sue Couch, please. Please state your name and addresses for the record.
That's all right. Gina Sullivan, 11 Spear Avenue.
Sue Braun, 17 Light Street.
We're here on behalf of the Couch people of Enfield, and we would just like to thank Peter Genitis for all his years on the Board of Ed. You represent us, the Couch people. We thank you. You hear us. Thank you. We'll miss you.
I have to add that I just love a person that speaks their mind. And Pete, you've always offered us that, and we really admire that. Thank you.
And one more thing. Let's go Mets.[291.44][291.44](Laughter).
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Board member comments. Mr. Neville.
We've got a few things tonight. First of all, the youth vote debates. I think most of us were privileged to go to both of them, one for the council and last night for the Board of Ed. I think, having gone to a lot of those over the years, these were the best that I've been to. The young people who put these together, the questions were just superb and very, very well done and very, very insightful. The whole process was just fantastic. And I think, to a person, I think we all appreciated the work that they did and what the staff members did to get this out there. So I'd just like to commend those folks for that, and I look forward to future debates as we move on. I also had the opportunity to go to the Enfield High National Junior Honor Society. Those are induction. Those are always great things to go to, and it's nice to see our kids recognized for the good work that they do and the work that they will continue to do representing the school in that capacity. Ray and I had a chance to go to the Teacher of the Year ceremony over at House of Memorial. And actually, Lori was there as well. All of us were there. And I think, again, it's another one of those good things that I don't think we celebrate enough. You know, special educator, get it this time, Connie Mazetta, and, you know, just wonderful work that she does with kids with autism. And it just, it's so great that we highlighted that and that she was recognized for that good work. Sometimes the people who work the smaller number of kids don't always get recognized, and it's just so nice to see that happen. But she certainly, I think, will represent Enfield very, very well. Yesterday, we got to go to the, Sunday, we got to go to the New England Association of Schools and Colleges event over at JFK. And again, it was well put together. I think the comments from Mr. Segalski and from Jerus Griffin in terms of highlighting the process and what they did, I think were enlightening and right on target. So I think it's a good process. I've always believed in that process. I think we have to look at what we do, why we do it, and then have somebody come and assess how well we're doing it and what we can do to improve. It's a good process. And for those who don't know this, the staff has been working for two years on a document that quantified how well they met the New England Association of Schools and Colleges standards. And there's a team that's coming in from all over New England to assess that. And they'll be in and out of all the classrooms and writing up reports with recommendations on how we can improve. And they'll be here and through, but Wednesday noontime, I think, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken. So it's a good process, and I'm glad that the school continued that process this year. And finally, we have a week to go until the election. A week from now, we'll be all standing out at the polls encouraging people to come in and vote. And I want to make a couple of comments about it because this is one of those elections where it's not a big turnout. And I think it's part of our civic responsibility to go out there. I also think it's a good thing to do with your kids. And I always took my kids to the polls, and I looked at it as like a role model type thing, that this is what you're supposed to do. This is what democracy is about, and I think Peter would agree with me on that. A lot of people have fought and died so that we can have these rights. And a lot of countries envy us because we have the right to vote for our legislators. And I just, I hate to see people miss that opportunity. So I'd encourage all of you, please, whatever you're doing, come out. The polls are open from 6:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. Please come out and vote. Bring your kids with you. It's a good learning and civic experience for all of them. And finally, on the election, there were three referenda on the election, and I think everybody got a notice in the mail with them. But I encourage you to support those. I think it came out last night from a number of the speakers, talking about the importance of doing these things, the good things that happens to the schools because of that. And I think that we need to get involved and look at that. We're coming to you for your approval, but we think that that approval is going to give you something better than what you have now. And a lot of the concerns that we have are being addressed by these referenda. So I'd encourage you to come out and please take them very, very seriously, and we hope you go for them. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neville. Ms. Thurston. Mr. Peabody? Yes.
I was hoping to have a little more time. No. I was gonna say you. You know, I was at with Mr. Neville and Ms. Ungeyer at the Teacher of the Year presentation, and it was a very touching and rewarding thing to go to. Definitely agree with Mr. Neville on the fact that it was special this year because it was for a special education teacher. Oftentimes, that's a spot that just is always being asked to do things, asked to do things, and just doesn't get recognized. Regarding the youth vote, it was a blast, even though I was accused of being someone who I'm not. But it was great. Everybody did a wonderful job. Special shout-out to Matt Evans. Not only was he working the youth vote, but I want everybody to know that he's a keeper for the Fermi soccer team, and he set the record for most saves this year. That boy got hammered. Again, I was at the accreditation session, and I came away very pleased. I came away pleased with what people are doing, what they're saying. People are saying, yes, this is where we are, this is what we achieve, and this is where we need to improve. I think Jack Welch, former CEO of GE, coined the phrase "continuous quality improvement." And I have seen that throughout the schools in the year and 10 months I've been here. People are trying, they're working it, making good stuff happen. I was at the Henry Barnard PTO meeting, and I'm gonna tell you, those PTOers, they're fantastic. They, the meeting was great, the work they do, tremendous. The feedback I got about issues along the lines of how long kids are on buses, their whole active lives, kids come home, they get their homework done, they hit a soccer practice or an activity, and our kids are under siege. There's like very little time to play and have a good time and just downtime. And that's important to recognize in our world. I had a conversation with one of our counselors, and he pointed out something to me. And I talked last, a couple of weeks ago, about the director of Homeland Security Research Labs being an Enfield High graduate. Well, this one blew me away. The number-two guy for Oracle was an Enfield High graduate. I don't have his name. When I get it, I'll mention it. But that's just, that's a major corporation, largest database firm in the world, and our guy was the number-one advisor to the CEO, Mr. Iason. That's pretty impressive, Enfield. And lastly, on referendum number three, I would ask for the support for that referendum. A lot of people complain about various things in the schools: roofs, HVAC, what have you. This is gonna fix that. It's over 30 years of deferred maintenance that has to be dealt with. So I hope that everybody would support it, think about it, and, you know, vote for that particular referendum. Thank you, and have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. Ms. Ungeyer.
Hello. I attended the Teacher of the Year award ceremony at Hazardville Memorial, and I want to say congratulations again to Connie Mazetta. It was a very nice reception that they had for her. I'd like to give a shout-out to two other teachers from Enfield. Harvard Divinity School Professor Diane Moore, Dr. Diane Moore, held a five-day workshop about religious literacy. This is a project to understand religion and teaching methods that can be applied in social studies. This was in conjunction with Terri Schmidt, Executive Director at the Connecticut Council for Interreligious Understanding. Two Enfield teachers were recommended by Michelle Middleton. They are Tony Allegro and my son, John Ungeyer. There is a brief video that you can see John being interviewed with several other social studies teachers, and it's on YouTube. And in the search box, you can put in "religious literacy project," "The Greater Hartford Teacher Education Initiative." So a shout-out to those two guys. I also attended the Jack-o'-lantern festival on the town green, and that had a good turnout and was lots of fun. I attended the Crec Council in Hartford. Dr. Bruce Douglas will be retiring, and they found a replacement for him. The new executive director's gonna be Dr. Greg Florio. Dr. Douglas was recently awarded the 2015 Champions Award for Youth Development from the YMCA, and he will be missed. Crec also sponsored a webinar and follow-up meeting to address the escalating cost of stop-loss coverage through a reinsurance captive. I wanted to ask Dr. Schuman through the chair if we're involved in this and if it would be a benefit to us during our next budget season for us to purchase the stop-loss insurance coverage, or, I wasn't sure if we were involved in that. Okay. Okay. It just seemed like we could save some money possibly through that initiative. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Ms. Ungeyer. Secretary Grady.
Well, last week, I attended the, what I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, was the Sunshine Kids Foundation that they were raising, they were trying to reach a goal of $5,000. And if they reach the $5,000 goal, Mayor Copan, Thompsonville Fire Chief Bill Provantur, librarian Lisa Ellis, and I believe Councilman Tom Arnoni are going to have their hair dyed pink. They reached their goal of $5,000 plus. Actually, they're still going. So I'm looking forward to, I believe, early November that they're going to have their hair dyed pink. So look for them in town. I'm sure you'll be able to spot them very easily. But I want to thank everybody who contributed to that cause. It's a very good cause, dear to my heart and dear to a lot of people's hearts up here, and one of the reasons why we're doing what we're doing tonight. And congratulations to the folks that ran that fundraiser. Job well done. I also attended the Parkman Halloween Party this past Friday night. There were some really good costumes that the kids came up with, kinda scary. They made out pretty good with the candy part there. I mean, I'm sure they're gonna be on a sugar high for the weekend there, so. And also, I was at the Jack-o'-lantern thing here on the town green. I kinda got asked to help out a little bit handing out in different stations when they took their breaks. And again, these kids in this town come up with some great costumes, and it was a good event, very well attended. And I think that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, Secretary Grady. Ms. LeBlanc.
Yes, I want to talk about the debate last night. I thought that the students did a wonderful job, and I thought they had well-thought-out, tough questions. I thought some of the questions were a little tough. But they did a great job, and I'm very proud of the students. They took the role very seriously. I would like to, like Tim, encourage people to go out and vote next Tuesday. It's very important. It is your constitutional right to be able to go out and vote. And I really wish people took that and showed up at the polls next Tuesday because if you want change, your voice will be heard through your vote. I'd also like to say, the election's next Tuesday. Some of us are running, some of us aren't. I'd like to thank the voters for the last four years for electing me. I've enjoyed working with everyone on the board this year. We don't know, you know, who could be sitting here. Anything can happen. But I've enjoyed it. Everyone enjoyed working with Dr. Schuman, Chris, and Kathy. Peter, it's hard for me to say, but we really became on the same page a little bit this year. But there was different things that you used to say about teaching that really showed your passion for teaching, and I really appreciate that. But again, everybody go out and vote next Tuesday, and I thank the voters and my Board of Ed constituents for the last two years. Thank you.
Mr. Genitis.
Before I get to my rant, just a couple of things. Quentin Tarantino, you're pond scum. Yeah. And as far as the debates, I'm sorry, I totally forgot about them because I was watching two back issues of Bastard Executioner. So. But I'm glad all of you guys got to sit up on the stage and debate. Yeah, got that last one, I hope. Okay. Part four, my final rant, and I thank Tom for letting me go last today. There are just four things I want to talk about. First one, Fermi. Town council, they had their debates, and from what I saw, nothing was mentioned about, from either party, about Fermi. Now, this board spent two years with Fermi as an issue on the table, and what did we get? It will be discussed in six months after the next budget season. So I hope this budget goes quicker than the last time. Other than myself, I do not know how any other board member would vote on keeping Fermi open as a school. I would vote to keep it open. As an upper-middle school, grades seven and eight, as an alternative school, as a Volk Ed school, as a music academy, as a performing arts academy, whatever, steal some of the ideas from the magnet schools that they're using to entice our kids to go to their schools and use them here in Enfield to keep our kids here in Enfield. The toughest decision I think I've made over the past six years was voting on the reorganization of the elementary schools, thereby doing away with the neighborhood schools K to six. There were a lot of reasons for doing it. They made sense, and in the end, it was educationally and a logical decision. It was good. Was it tough for many to accept? You betcha. Has it worked out for the better? I think so. It was a big change. Now Fermi sits there, and no matter what becomes of this building, that too is gonna result in a big change. There will be a lot of "it could been," "it could've been's," "it should've been's," "we had an opportunity to." It will have a ripple effect on this town, no matter how Fermi ends up being used. But if it ceases to be used as its school, it will never be used as a school again. I think this board and the town council have kicked the Fermi can down the road, and we're near the road's end. The new board and the town council are gonna have to make a decision soon because Fermi is deteriorating before our very eyes. The second thing I'd like to talk about, as this will be my last board meeting where I have an opportunity to make board comments, I would like to offer a suggestion. Since seven of you will all probably be back here again, maybe with one exception, I'd like to state the following. Sometimes people are asked to do things that they'd rather not do or don't want to do. However, there comes a time when one has to step forward, to make personal sacrifices, to give more of themselves than what they think they're capable of doing, to do what is right and good and is needed for the reasons each of you chose to serve on the Board of Education. It is with keeping this thought in mind that I would like to recommend the next Board of Ed chairperson, regardless of which party wins majority. And that would be Tina LeBlanc. And Mike Ludwig as vice chair, regardless of which parties get the majority. If you're a sitting board member, think about it, and you'll know why I say this, and you'll make them do it, whether they like it or not. Thirdly, I've known Jeff, our superintendent, vaguely. I think he's a good man and has a multitude of good ideas. And I know Chris a little better because of an old friend, Chuck Lorre, who vouched for him. So I know he's a good guy. After that, things get a little murky with me when it comes to the central office and the cabinet. And for various reasons and details, I will not discuss them publicly. That said, it is my strong belief that this so-called cabinet does not know Enfield, not know our core beliefs, not know our citizenry, our ability to pay for the best education we can afford. I don't think they know our teaching staff, our secretarial staff, our custodial staff, et cetera. I think we made a mistake. A decision was made in haste, and unless things radically change, I'd like to see this entire cabinet go off to greener pastures elsewhere. And finally, I've had the distinct privilege to have been elected to serve six years on the Enfield Board of Ed. I thoroughly enjoyed my first two years. Unfortunately, I can't say the same for the last four. Roll over on that couch. I was rather joyous when, two years ago, the Republicans regained control of the board. I had a friend and a fellow conservative, someone who I felt I helped mentor along the way. And who I thought we'd do good, sound, reasonable, fiercely conservative things together, things that were good for education yet affordable for the citizens of Enfield. I thought together we'd make the tough decisions that would be made on many issues, like we did during our first term on the board. Unfortunately, politics got involved, and things didn't quite work out the way I envisioned them. Until politics gets its ugly head out of the Board of Education, it will never function to the level it could be. We have enough trouble combating the federal regulations, the state regulations, the new evaluation system, Common Core. We're fighting to keep what little influence we still have with regards to local control of education, our needs, our wants, for our town. We needn't be fighting amongst ourselves. There's an old saying, "You can take a man out of the army, but you can't take the army out of a man." I became a board member because I was a teacher. I don't know why I'm welling up here. Well, I feel like Boehner. Well. Boy, you guys can have the house. I became a board member because I was a teacher, spelled with a capital T. I served on the board, made decisions, tried to educate and enlighten fellow board members as to what really went on in our schools, to offer opinions based on 38 years of experience. Jesus, this never happens. Excuse me. Based on 38 years of experience. Why? Because I loved being a teacher, and I always will be a teacher. It's so rewarding. Jeez, I only got half a page to go. It was so rewarding and exciting to help kids learn how to learn, to help guide them, to help formulate them, to help them along their way in life, to see their smiles, to know that they know you did your best to help them along the way, for the short time you had their minds, their hearts, and their emotions in your hands. I'd like to thank all those people who supported me in the past, who voted for me, who have shared many kind words, who have called me the conscience of the board, who have thanked me, but it's I who thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Genitis. First, I'd like to start off with all of you with the youth vote. I think they did a wonderful job. They really went above and beyond the call this time. I attended the Jack-o'-lantern fest. It was very important. It was that they actually managed to get it off again. My kids love it. Again, the kids do a remarkable job there. The committees that are responsible for putting that together do a remarkable job. I want to thank or congratulate again Connie Mazetta for being Teacher of the Year. She represents the best that Enfield has. And now, to the heart of the matter. This is the final board meeting for the, regular board meeting for this group. And I want to thank all of you for your hard work, for your support, and for your insights. I can honestly say that it has been a pleasure to work with all of you. Good luck to all of you. Peter, good luck to you. Thank you for your service. And finally, it's important that we support all three referendums on this election. It's important for the schools. It's important for education. It is very important that you support number three. If number three is directly tied to education, and I've said it during the debate, and I'll say it again, if you vote no on three, you cannot say you are supporting education. It's important. It has to happen. It will have a direct impact on future educational budgets if it doesn't pass. And things are tight enough now. So, thank you. Unfinished business, transition tasks. Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The various committees of
The various committees of the board, the curriculum committee, and is scheduled to meet tomorrow and they are beginning to work on some of the topics that will make necessary policy changes. The policy committee is set up to meet on November 4th to hear those changes if they are indeed brought forth. The curriculum committee, as Mr. Neville Omoso or Mr. Peabody will, will discuss perhaps during the report, is also working on several other items. Through the governance council, we've begun to talk about the possibility of procuring the uniforms for our athletic teams and our marching band. We're going to need to set up a meeting of the leadership committee to begin some of the work that's identified for them. And also, the budget process will begin this Thursday with our kickoff meeting. We will be discussing that, but we've already met several times, especially with the high school principals, as we look to merge the budget items from both of their schools into one and then look forward into how we're going to staff and fund the United High School when we open in September. So things are moving forward and we continue to work our way through the list and we'll keep you updated as we get there.
Thank you, Dr. Schuman. New business.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead.
For the uniforms for the sports and the bands, are, is there going to be a student collaboration at all or is that going to be?
Is there going to be what?
A student collaboration? Are you going to have any students involved in that or?
Not usually, no, but we can.
It's just a thought. Maybe if there's a way to get the, you know, I don't know if it's juniors this year or something to maybe collaborate juniors from MFRHI and juniors from Fermi representatives and that way they each feel like they maybe had a part in the uniform. I don't know. It's just, it's just a thought I'm throwing out there. Maybe it would be a way to, to begin the collaboration of getting the students together and feeling like the uniform is, is one. I don't know. Just a thought.
Okay, thank you. How's it?
I'm good.
You going to talk now or you going to?
Are you just going to sit there going like this?
I'm Italian, leave me alone.
New business. 11A approval of the fiscal year 2017 Head Start Federal Grants Program and Personnel Policies.
This is something the board has done year after year to approve the Head Start Federal Grant and Early Childhood Community Assessment Program plans and personnel policies. Mrs. Clement, who's the director of our program, is here tonight. She can answer any questions and the board then can take any action it chooses.
You're on.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Clement, the director of Head Start, and I've got with me Kelly Bowles and she is our family engagement coordinator. And we always like to give you an update of our program before you vote on us. And I also wanted to let you know that our annual report is on our website and that gives you a overview of the work that we did last year and how we spent our grant money. And it also lets you know how we're going to spend this year's grant money. All 104 of our federally funded slots are filled and we've done screenings on all of our children, which include developmental screenings, height, weight, vision, hearing and social and emotional. And we've started home visits with all of our families. Well, we're almost through with them, actually. And during those home visits, we go over the assessments and we form family goals as well as educational goals. And we've also had great parent participation and I'll let Kelly speak to that.
Hello, I am Kelly Bowles. I'm the family sport coordinator at Enfield Head Start. I just want to thank you for your continued support through the years. I've been the family sport coordinator for five years. And although I love my job, I have to say that the best part is when I'm in town and I hear from PTOs in the elementary school that they use the Head Start Parent Engagement as a model. I'm touched by that because I do work very hard with my family sport staff to plan health, wellness, school readiness, parent workshops weekly, as well as monthly family activities to empower our parents to learn how to be engaged in their children's education, not only in preschool, but also as they enter kindergarten and all of their years in the Enfield public schools. We've had a wonderful first two months and I know the next eight months are going to be as highly attended. Our families thrive to learn the skill sets needed to engage in their children's education and I thank you for your support in allowing us to continue to do this. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Neville.
You said you have 104 currently. Is that, is that your max level?
Yes, that's how much we're funded for. We do have 27 on our waiting list.
That was my next question. It's the max that we're funding for, funded for or is that the, what's the capacity of the, of the facilities?
Well, that is the capacity of the facility, too.
That is the capacity. Okay, okay. How much of this is, is all of this grant money?
We have federal grants and we have state grants and then we also have some support from the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Peabody.
I want to thank you. One of my neighbors' family literally just metaphorically blew up, all sorts of reasons and the stabilizing, stabilization for the granddaughter and the daughter was you guys. And I could see it. You know, I'm always over, I'm over there and I just want to let you know, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Are your kids, are your kids still working with Amar and the Gilbane and all of the learning activities that you've done with them?
Well, at this point, we're not so much because they are flat out on trying to finish that wing and we're trying to stay out of the way.
But they did show an interest for during the school year when they finished that wing. That's their main goal right now.
And our children are loving watching them do it. They sit, they line up along the fence, watch all the construction and the equipment and they're having a great time with that.
They'll all grow up to be construction workers or engineers, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Anything else? I want to entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2017 Head Start Federal Grants Program plans and personnel policies.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Is that sitting down, roll call?
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Peabody?
Affirmative.
Mrs. Engeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Four.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 Enfield High School, Fermi High School Safe Grad donations. Dr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the past, the board has donated $500 to each committee, the committee from each school. The committees are not asked, but the board has always gone ahead and made this donation. Therefore, the board can discuss this and either choose to give $500 or any amount that the board so approves, if any. Make a motion to?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neville, seconded by Mr. Peabody. Any discussion?
I'd like to see us continue this. I mean, I'm old enough that my kids are one of the first groups that went on these things here and it's been a great tradition. And I think it deals with some of the real issues around graduation and I think it addresses them incredibly well. So I would certainly like to see us continue that. I'm guessing that if we combine the high schools, we'll be looking at $1,000 contribution to one score. I'm just thinking out loud and planning on the budget, so, but certainly I'm in favor of it.
Any other discussion? Sensing none, Kathy, roll call, please.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
Yes.
Mr. Peabody?
Affirmative.
Mrs. Engeyer?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Four.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Serrard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Board committee reports. Curriculum committee.
Okay, I'll just be giving the curriculum report and my colleagues can add in on that. The building committee report, I spent my time at the debates and not at the, at the building committee, so I will get you that report at the next meeting that we have here. We met on the 21st, I believe, and we basically had a, a group of folks coming in to present additions and changes to the programs of study that's going to be coming out for 2016, I believe. We had presentations from music, social studies, science, family, consumer science, and there was one other, but I can't remember it, Ray. What was the other one that we, we had here?
Technology one.
Technology. Basically, what they're doing is, is addressing some of the changes that we have to make, some for transition, okay, they're dealing with it, and some, and some of those we actually put off until we're having the next meeting that we're going to have. We tabled them until we had some more information. But these people, I think, to a person, came in incredibly prepared and had done an awful lot of research on those courses and the presentations they gave were exceptional. And I, I think the results that, that we had, I think, enhanced the curriculum and will enhance it for years to come. We discussed a number of things with them in terms of scheduling and, and how these things would play out once we combined the high schools and so on. And I think out of that discussion, we ended up tabling two of the requests, not because they weren't well thought out, but because we needed answers to the other questions. So we've scheduled a meeting for tomorrow at three, at three o'clock and it's going to be in the curriculum conference room to meet with the principals of the high school and schedulers and talk about the impact of, of the proposed schedule that they have. We're also looking, and all of these things are also on your list, Dr. Schuman, and to see what we need to do, how much time we need to spend, what other data do we need in order to carry these things out. We're also looking at grade reporting, we're looking at the, the structure of the day and things like that. And we have heard a brief summary of that, I would say, maybe last May or something like that, we had talked to the high school principals and we're looking for this to be a more in-depth one. So it's a, it's an additional special meeting for us, but, and we're going to keep doing that if we have to, to meet the timeline. Because of the election, we, we could fall behind that timeline and we don't want to do that. So that meeting will be tomorrow at three. It is open to the public because we've told people that, you know, if they're interested in this, you know, this is one avenue they can come and get involved with and at least hear part of that discussion as we work our way to a, to a conclusion. So Ray or Stacy, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Can I ask you a question? As a former history teacher, is there any chance that when you're doing all this new curriculum writing, apart from just a high school, that say, like history, in fifth grade when US history is, is mandatory, that you set a, a spot where they have to get to? You know, everybody comes over across the ocean, then they?
Peter, I can cut it out, they already are.
Okay. Because? And then in middle school, they go?
Yes.
Okay.
They're doing it by level and it's just because it's something you and I have always complained about.
Yeah.
You know, we teach this, we never get, we never get to the, to the 20th century because there's too much content in there. So we actually have discussed that and finalized that.
Good, okay.
Thank you, it was a good question.
Mr. Peabody.
Yeah, one of the things that the teachers and the coordinators emphasized is the, I'm going to use the word stranding or pathways or linking everything up from the lower grades to middle school, up to high school and even to the AP classes. And I think that is, that is a really good thing to do. What I, that was one of the most enjoyable meetings I think I've ever been at. The dialogue was, was incredible. Like Mr. Neville said, it was, became in prepared. We had questions and answers and we got our, our questions answered, but looking forward to tomorrow to bring it all together.
These, these are all the discussions that we all ran for office for, to have these kinds of discussions on how we can improve student learning, how we can coordinate it better and deliver it better. And, you know, I think Peter will remember that we've been talking about history standards and changes from the state level forever. And I think they were the longest ones, they took the longest time to get them out and they finally came this summer so that we could actually work on that area. So I, I think what we're going to have is going to work out much, much better than what we currently deliver. I think it will make some sense in, in the framework that Peter's talking about. So, but I encourage you, if you want to come down to the meeting, we're going to be there at three o'clock tomorrow. We're going to be talking about some things. But at some point, they will be coming here to present it to the board. We've asked them to go through you, Dr. Schuman, to do that. But I think we wanted to kind of hash it out first and then have the principals and Michelle bring it to the, to the board and, and give a presentation at a public session. Very good.
Any other committee reports? Very good. Approval of the minutes, regular minutes, October 13th, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion or changes? Sensing none? Joe hands?
Nothing.
Approval of accounts and payroll.
Nothing tonight.
Correspondents and communications.
None tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Audiences. There is no need for executive session.
Then, no, 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 please, please. In six years, I've never had the whole board agree on anything I've wanted to do. I make the motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
You guys have come around.